Started. That worked. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And this is our regular work session for the month of December. And we'll have a regular board meeting on Thursday here at the central office at 5:30 for those who want to attend. And so, we're gonna go over our agenda items for this night. Um, I'm gonna go down. Um, Matt?
What?
Are you okay to go now?
If you want me to.
Okay. I'm gonna let Matt go. He's got an obligation. He has to leave. And so, he's gonna go over his board action item.
My item for the month, I guess I'm gonna come up here, is the annual district improvement plan, um, action where we take testing and all sorts of different information from other sources that are focused on student achievement. Um, I'm not gonna get into it too in-depth unless you really need me to. The platform has changed this year, so we're all learning a new system, the schools and um, the district as well. The two articles that are, or the two required components of it are the um, needs assessment and the um, skill, or no, the um, goal builder template, which is a different piece that they sent us two weeks ago. So, they're actually sending the stuff as the year goes on for us to continue working on, so. Um, in short, all of the required goals that the district is required to have are included. There are activities and current focus that we have listed in here to keep us in compliance with what's being requested. I've talked back and forth with KDE several times on it to provide support to our schools and to really go through it on my own, so I can learn it in order to help give them some feedback as well. Uh, I've had teachers look at it, principals have looked at it, parents have looked at it, students have looked at it, and all given feedback. It's on the district website if anyone would like to give us anything that they would like us to add. There's no deadline per se on an improvement plan. It's continuously being updated, so it's a living document that um, we can add to or take away from as goals are met over time. So, next year will be a bigger year, I have a feeling. I think they'll have a lot more guidance. Um, they've been slow on training, but you're gonna hear from KDE that they're understaffed and under budgeted. So, in general, um, good, good plan. Things that are required are all in there. And like I've shared already, it will keep us in compliance for what we need to do.
Everyone's had a chance to review this information. Um, are there any questions or anything concerning talking?
One of the attachments, it said that the graduation rate had increased from 67% over the last five years to 98. It says example. Is that, was that us?
Oh, no, no, that's KDE. That's KDE giving you an example of what you can do. They give wording in there that are like, you could write one that looks like that.
Okay, so, this is not our information?
That's the samples. Our information is also in there. I can't delete that. It's on the template. It's, it's on their print. And that's what I'm, I mean, when you print it out, it doesn't even come into a form that is reader friendly, so that's one of the challenges of trying to work with it.
So then, what, where do you plug in your numbers?
Those are on this, on the other one, on the goal builder template right here. We're looking at the needs assessment. It's the attachment. Proficiency goal. Yep, proficiency goal, exactly. There's a transition goal. There's all of those. There it is. Go back some more.
Right, so, so you're starting, the district improvement plan has two parts, needs assessment, or is that a different agenda item?
It's two parts, like I said when I started. Well, there's two components that need to be approved for the state.
So then, which item number is the needs assessment?
It's all ones then.
It says comprehensive district and school improvement plans.
Correct. That's what you have.
It's a part of dollars one as much as I am. It's a part of dollars one.
Yep. It's not the document. It's the planning activity, which is important.
So now, which part are you adding?
It's me and a bunch of people.
Cause it says example.
Right, come back over here. That's all my, come back. Come back. This is all us. All that's us. With each of those different components. That's all us. These are our goals. These are the actions that we're doing. And then, we can add more stuff to it.
Okay.
Does that help? It's, I, the template is difficult to use. I agree. I wish it all came out in one nice readable document, but to be positive, it's better than what it was before. We like this one more than the last one.
Is there anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You didn't slip out.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Appreciate you letting me go first.
No problem. Okay, we'll go back. Um, the minutes of the prime meeting, meetings, um, you all had a chance to review all of that information as well in your packet. Is there any questions concerning the meeting minutes? If not, we'll go on to treasurer's report. Alright. Yeah.
Nothing really new and exciting this month, so I'll just, I'll go over it on Thursday. Unless there's any particular questions you have. We did receive our property taxes, you know, last month, so we'll see. I'll see if we can jump in that.
Any questions for Eric on the treasurer's report? Since night will go down to bills and salaries payment?
They're only two significant bills this month that, that we paid were, excuse me, in November was the Bluegrass International. That was for the special education bus that was previously approved, as well as the audit, the payment for the audit.
High school bills. Any questions relating to that? Um, the state superintendent's report, Mr. Vali?
Chairman Rager, board members, it's a little bit different tonight is I have a couple of principals who are here. Uh, they have, I think, parties we scheduled over Thursday night, so they're gonna go in and present tonight. But before we get to that, uh, I have Paul Rager here. Uh, Paul's agreed to come and speak to us a little bit. Uh, I don't wanna steal his thunder on what he's done, but I'll go ahead and lead into it. He organized a poker run. This is, how many years, Paul?
Second year.
Second year. And this year, they raised $8,000 and so was able to give each of the elementary friskies $1,600 apiece, which was amazing. He's got a really amazing story, and I asked him to come. He would spend a few minutes, if you would, Paul, if you don't care, you can stand there. He would come up here and, and talk to us just a little bit. I appreciate you so much coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not much of a talker now, but Robbie asked me to come get up and talk. A lot of you knows me. Couple of years ago, I had my young son, uh, had depression and uh, he's no longer with us. So, I am trying to turn something tragic into something positive. So, all of, all of his friends and all of us got together and started doing poker runs. First year we done it, we raised $4,000. And I donated $800 to each school, each elementary school. This year, we raised $8,000. So, I ended up giving, like I said, each school $1,600 apiece. So, we got another one coming up July the 28th, and uh, of July, and we're gonna try to do it again, see what we can do on this third year. And all the proceeds will go to the elementary schools also. As long as, as long as I keep people coming, I'm gonna keep giving the money to the school. And uh, and I just hope, you know, it helps, it helps out.
Paul, would you talk just a little bit about what a poker run is? Maybe not everybody's, and how you raised that money? I know you had all, you auctioned off stuff. I know there was a lot of stuff you did there.
Like Mr. Davis said, why I done it, I went around the businesses, and some of the business donated stuff for a silent auction. And some business donated money. But I don't ask for money. I always ask them if they could donate something for a silent auction. But we're luckily enough, we got some that do donate, and they do a pretty good job on it. And like, like Robbie's talking about on these poker run, whatever amounts to, a bunch of guys shows up on motorcycles. I charge, I charge them $10 a bike, $5 extra for a rider. That's $10, you know, per couple. And then, all the money that is raised there goes in the pot. And we also, with this time, we raised, we sold shirts. And we sold several shirts and that, it got us quite a bit of money. But, like I said, all it is basically, a bunch of guys and women gets together, having a good time, and just enjoy, just enjoy the day. And uh...
Had a set, had a set course to ride to.
Yes. Like I said, we'll, I usually set up a ride point 75 to 100 miles. And we stop, we'll start out with a card, and then I'll make three more stops for a card, and when we get back to our starting point, I get another card. And then, whoever's got the best hand, we give them $100. And most, most of the time, they'll donate the money back. And we have, I don't know if y'all have ever been around a poker run. We have bike events, where you do events on motorcycles. And you do it as a couple. You have a slow race, as you try to get to the finish line, but last. Try to get there last. And uh, it's not as easy as you think. We have a wheelie bike, where the lady stands up on the back of the bike and tries to, whoever gets the biggest, for the hot dog, they win the competition. Balloon toss, and like I said, several different games that we play. And like I said, all it is, is fun and raise money for charities and stuff. You know, a lot of people thinks, you know, motorcycle, bad group. But, you're motorcycle people, that's gonna be more generous than any organization that you ever have. Cause they put their whole heart and soul in it. And like I said, they haven't let me down yet. And Dakota, they're there for him. And Dakota was one of the loveliest persons you ever meet in your life. He always tried to make everybody else happy, but he just couldn't make himself. And uh, like I said, anybody's, everybody is welcome. You don't have to have a motorcycle to ride. You, vehicle, you ride, follow the brakes of a vehicle. And we also, we've been lucky enough, the fire department, all the sheriff, the sheriff's departments, Central City, Green Police Department, they've been great with us. Uh, usually the sheriff's department, but they'll, they'll give us an escort. Last year, Central City gave us our guy behind us, the followers, so we can keep everybody safe. They block intersections and, like I said, it's, it's really nice. If you hadn't ever been to one, you really need to at least go to one to see, to get the feeling of it. If you ever tried once, you won't stop. I promise you. And uh, like I said, it's just a bad situation, and, and it happens every day. And uh, and like I said, I'm just trying to take something bad and turn it into something good.
Paul, we appreciate you, and you're wrong about one thing. You are a good talker.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Paul, for coming out.
Thank y'all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We're gonna give Grant the tough, Mr. Sharp the tough draw of following that. So, Mr. Sharp, if you would, come up and, or stand there, whatever you wanna do it, and talk about what's going on at Bremen you're proud of.
Today, we have our annual Christmas bazaar. Uh, it's where students and community members make up different ornaments and things like that, different trinkets for Christmas, and students get a chance to purchase these. And I will say that we have, in the works for March, it was a lot better than it was last year when Mr. Davis was there.
Yeah, I figured that because Central City beat them an academic team last week. I don't know who's bad this year.
November students of the month. Uh, our third grade also put on a play based on the Barbara Robinson book, the best Christmas pageant ever. And so, that, the students who were able to, uh, they put on this performance multiple times for all the different grade levels. They did a great job with that. We're currently having pod wars, and students and the teachers decorate the pods, and uh, then they go back and they vote on their favorite, favorite ones. I think I had a picture of Sherry's here of the one that probably would, would be a a pretty good picture. It was just with, uh, let's see here. Anyway, those, those, those pod wars are out and going, and students get a good chance to vote on them.
Mr. Sharp, did you see the final number on how much they raised today? Cause Miss Willis, she just texted me.
Okay.
Uh, they raised, this is a quarter and 50 cents at a time. They raised over $3,100 today.
Yeah.
That's gonna go...
And with the money, will then go to the FRC and purchase cokes and food and things for students, families in our school at Nellie. Uh, evil pride moment, Mistress Katie Willis, I can talk about. She worked really hard to put on all of that. Uh, she spent a lot of time working with that, and, and we just appreciate her. I appreciate all our teachers, how hard they work on a daily basis, so, anyway.
Call phone, 1-862-293-5497.
Y'all do that. Will it not come up?
Y'all talk to...
Okay. Well, it's impressive. I saw it, so we'll, we'll go with that. And if you can't get it up, we'll let, uh, Ms. Higgs, you brought, you brought some kids with you, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna give, till Sherry says she gives up. You give up?
I know you bet.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Higgs, it's you.
Should I have Carson Vincent with us? Carson?
Yes, yes.
First weekend of this month, longest home field archery tournament. Carson placed first in his division in fifth grade, and he also placed first overall in the whole tournament. So, we're very proud of his skills. What did you shoot, Carson?
Uh, 260.
Wow.
Very nice. Also have an entourage of, of people with me tonight. Um, Kelly Gann is a deaf and hard of hearing teacher in our building, and the sign language interpreter, Edie Ryan. But also have Emily and Erin Perry. Now, Emily's come on loan. She actually attends North Middle, but she was a former Goventide student, but her brother is still with us, Erin Perry. And they participated a few weeks ago in the regional deaf and hard of hearing spelling bee. Now, when that occurred, Emily won first place and beat Erin in that. But the opposite happened at the state. They both had to go to the state, and Erin won second place, and Emily come in third. So, there's a lot of competition.
Certainly.
So, but we're very proud of those students. They worked very hard to participate in that. So, we're very proud of them. Also, this Thursday night, our fourth grade and fifth grade will be performing at Phillips Martin High. Fourth grade will be presenting the play, uh, Santa's Holiday Playlist, and fifth grade will be presenting a Pirate's Christmas. And I know that you all will be here at the board meeting, but there's an encore performance that will be Friday morning, if you'd like to come. And then, following the two presentations, we do our December student recognition at Phillips Martin. So, we've got the host student, Bobby, over, and we've done this three or four years in a row, and it's been a very nice day for us. So, you are welcome to come and see those two performances.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Higgs.
Thank you.
I think that's all the principals I have. Mr. Rager, you're up tonight as well, Brad.
And one thing I wanna brag on, Emily, I talked to her teachers, and I was telling them of her award, and she has a brace on her right arm, and she's right-handed, but they said that she just started writing with her left hand, never complained, never said, you know, "I can't write," or whatever. So, that's just the type of student that she is. So, so anyway, I just wanna share that with you all, that they had nothing but praises of, of Emily whenever I, I shared that with them. So, just a good job to her. Um, and I wanted to kinda piggyback off the archery. Uh, the North Middle has competed in two, uh, archery competitions and placed first in both of those, so we want, we wanna brag, brag on them for doing a great job as well. Uh, was going through attendance numbers today, and we have 368 students that have missed three days or less. So, we have 96 were perfect attendance. So, I was looking to do attendance awards, and I'm like, wow, that 96 were perfect attendance. So, uh, we may have to dig back on what we're gonna do. So, anyway, we're really proud of our, money-wise, our awards. So, I was really impressed with the amount that we had as far as attendance numbers of our kids. Um, so, Beta, we're gearing up for Beta. We've got 604 students at North Middle. We've got 308 that are members of Beta Club. Um, we do currently have the, the national vice president in Buzzy Ashley. Uh, we're gonna send over 100 to the state convention. Uh, we're gonna test in 25 different areas when we do go. Um, they're just finishing up the community project, Project Warm. The elementary schools will be receiving, uh, some toboggans and gloves and mittens for preschool students. Their objective was to, uh, pretty much give every preschool student, um, either gloves, mittens, and a, and a toboggan, amongst them, I think maybe scarves as well. Uh, they're, they were sorting that when I left North Middle, so I don't know what the positivity on that was. There's a lot of boxes of clothing whenever I, whenever I left. Uh, also, I wanna brag on our STLP club that we've pretty much reorganized this year. Heather Harris has headed that up. If you'll look at the, uh, North Middle webpage, if you've not visited it in the last two or three weeks, I challenge you to do that. It looks really good. They're doing a wonderful job. Um, it's student-driven. Um, Ms. Harris is basically the facilitator, and she tells me she's learning from the students. And we've had three or four that have just found their niche with technology. And we now have a Twitter page up and going, and a Facebook page, and no, it's not because of me, it's because of the students. But, but anyway, we, we have a lot of technology going on, and it's, it's a testament to the students. So, so a lot of good things going on, but check our webpage out if you, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rager.
Thank you.
Chairman Rager, we may want to let the kids or some that are here before we move on, head out and get some pictures or something, so they won't, they wanna go ahead and go however they wanna do it.
Alright, that sounds good. I think Carla wants some pictures of you kids out in the hallway.
And that concludes.
Okay. We're down to personnel actions. Um, so any questions in relation to that? Melody will tell us all about that Thursday.
Hey, I knew that was...
Limited information.
Yes. Okay, and attendance and enrollment report, Mr. Freeman?
Got a couple of things to go over. Just, uh, the, we'll have the report, um, the normal sheet, you'll have that Thursday. I'll have Sherry send that off. We'll probably have it tomorrow. Uh, the deadline for attendance part, uh, to get that in is tomorrow, so we'll have that. I do have some preliminary numbers. Uh, we're looking at about a quarter, a little over a quarter below what we were this time last year, so we're around 93.8, um, which, uh, we're down this shade over a quarter of a point. Um, our enrollment, um, what I did have for that, we, 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 um, we did jump up a little bit again. Um, so, uh, I'm anxious to see what it is on Thursday. It can just change. But, uh, when I ran it on Friday, or actually, um, the month ended last Tuesday, we were up to 4,662, and if I remember, that's about 25 more than the previous month. But I'll, I'll finalize those Thursday, and it'll be the normal report for, for Thursday. You'll have that available. Any questions as far as that?
No question. Okay.
Calendar, um, the new law, and I forget what the law number was, but the, the new statute that came in, um, calendar, uh, legislation, we had to set up a committee. Um, I'll tell you a little bit about the makeup of the committee on Thursday. Uh, basically, it's given us two options. Um, an option that we could start school the Monday closest to Labor Day or any other time. And, um, what we have to do is, this time, if you notice, it's not an agenda item, but it'll be an agenda item in January. We have to have, it has to be on the, on the agenda for two meetings, but it cannot be listed as a, as a voting or board action item until the second time. So, uh, what I'm gonna do in just a minute, I'll, I'll give you a copy of the, of the calendar that the committee came up with, um, just to, um, share a couple of things with you on that, cause I don't wanna go into a whole lot. They've given some, some information that you'll have, and Ms. Wells served on that committee representing the board. Um, the biggest thing that, um, that the committee had to decide is, is whether to go with the, the option before that starting date, Monday, um, closest to August 26th. Uh, they chose to, to stay with the similar calendar that we have this year with 170 days. Um, and, um, opening day, I believe, is the 8th for students, August the 8th, and closing would be May the 20th. Uh, you do have a fall break, you do have a spring break, and that was the biggest thing that we talked about was, everybody that we talked with was, hey, we wanna fall break. So, um, you do have on there a number of makeup days. Um, it's 21. That'll be the last time we have that many unless we end up any this year, which hopefully we don't. Um, so, uh, but that's the biggest thing is, is it's not gonna be brought before a vote on Wednesday, but you will vote on that in January. Okay? So, any questions over that?
I'm glad there's a fall break. I've had, I cannot tell you how many phone calls, scared to death, people are not gonna go to the conference.
And what you get into, and I have my, my KDA, KDE, um, field rep that's over me through the state department or department of ed, um, Ms. Hornet, she told me about two weeks ago that, that she didn't know of any district that was gonna do the, starting August 26th, that Monday up. She knew of no one that was gonna do that. The biggest thing that the committee had to decide is whether to go with the option before that starting date, Monday closest to August 26th. They chose to stay with the similar calendar that we have this year with 170 days. And opening day, I believe, is the 8th for students, August the 8th, and closing would be May the 20th. You do have a fall break, you do have a spring break, and that was the biggest thing that we talked about was, everybody that we talked with was, hey, we want a fall break. So, you do have on there a number of makeup days, it's 21, that'll be the last time we have that many unless we end up any this year, which hopefully we don't. So, but that's the biggest thing, is it's not gonna be brought before a vote on Wednesday, but you will vote on that in January. Okay? Is there any questions over that?
I'm glad there's a fall break. I've had, I cannot tell you how many phone calls, scared to death, people are not gonna go to the fall break.
And what you get into, and I have my KDA, KDE, field rep that's over me through the State Department or Department of Ed, Ms. Hornet, she told me about two weeks ago that she didn't know of any district that was gonna do the, starting August 26th, that Monday up, she knew of no one that was gonna do that. Because if you do that, you're gonna get into not having a fall break, most likely. So, anyway, but I'll go into a little bit more specifics as far as the other dates on Thursdays. Okay? Any questions?
Honestly, Mr. Freeman did a very good job explaining to the committee and me as a new member to the board what all was involved in the calendar and answering my questions. So, it was very, a learning experience for me.
Thank you. Mr. Davis also wanted me to bring this up. It is getting that time. He wanted me to get some information with you all regarding NTI, or non-traditional instructional days. These are the days that can be counted for students as instructional days by staying home during severe weather, usually that's the case, would be snow days. If you recall, last year, when we looked at this, I believe in March or so, after reviewing the application, it talked about that we needed feedback from the community and it was gonna be tough to get feedback in, I think it was March, March or April, and then have to turn around and get the application in. So, I asked him, the direction of the board, it is an application process, but part of that is, hey, we could do a survey with Carla and the tech gentleman, that we could get some feedback on this. There is a, like I said, it is an application, it's no guarantee for, just because we submit it, we're gonna get it. And so, there's some things I do want to touch base on, and again, doesn't matter to me, one way or the other, I can give you my opinion if you want. But some of the pros, you do have some calendar flexibility, there is possibly some savings of fuel cost and energy savings. How it works is the ADA average, whatever we have, let's just say our ADA average was at the end of this year, 94.79. So, every NTI day that we would have, it would go down as 94.79. So, it is, you are getting some more money as far as from the ADA, because usually those snow days, you're looking, you know, they're not gonna beat your yearly average. Okay? Some cons, you know, you're talking about a serious loss of revenue for food service, it's roughly, Ms. Cooper figured roughly around $22,000 a day. You're not gonna get that because your kids won't be, there won't be a reimbursement. You do have loss of instructional time with the teacher. What we would have to do is probably the packet, just simply because of the lack of the internet resources and the training that will be required by the teachers at that time. I would suggest the packet, at least the first year, to see how it works out. Another issue that Mr. Davis wanted me to touch base on is, how are you gonna make up time for classified? You get into food service, transportation, instructional monitors and aids, these things all have to be addressed in the application. Also, how, some districts require their teachers to be at the school, alright, those days, some do not. And then there's other issues as far as how we're gonna modify special ed students that are IEPs with these days. So, there's some things that really need to be looked at, but like I said, I just needed to go, need to know how you all stood, and you can relay this to Mr. Davis, as far as, do we want to proceed with the application? Do you want to not do it? You know, you get into situations where you have a large number of days, I get it. And some districts actually say, we're not gonna use these days until we have eight snow days, and beginning that ninth one, they'll do an NTI. Some do it five, some do it 10. After talking with other districts, anytime you do three days in a row, they wouldn't suggest doing three days in a row, maybe two, because what happens is, the kids begin to slack off in that, and that's understandable, because if it's a good snow, they need to be, yeah, so, anyway. But it's just, this one, he wanted me to present this, because if we're going to at least do the application, you know, we could do the application and, you know, say, hey, look, we decided against this. It could be a safety measure for you all, if you have a bunch of days that we miss. So, but we really need to begin the process, you know, starting, at least getting information from the public. You know, I could set something up in January. So, I'll let you, let you all tell Mr. Davis how you all want me to proceed, and Ms. Roberts, Mr. Perkins, and Ms. Penley, once, if you decide to, for us to pursue the application, it'll be sort of a team effort among us that we'll submit that. Okay?
If someone does a packet, if we do days of packet, how long do they have to turn that in to students? Or does that have to be spelled out in the application?
I think what, the way it should work out is, they will come back to school and it should be, and I look at a completion or a participation, and right now, there isn't one. But I need to, I need to check on that, because something, this doesn't, when this program started, they had to be an 80% completion with that packet. There's not a number now, but that's something that I really, I want to, I can't give you a definite answer yet, because I've talked with a couple of people and they're, they're saying there's not a participation, which scares me, you know, so.
Whether it's online or a packet?
Right, exactly, yeah. So, that's a really good question that I don't have the answer, but is certainly one that we want to have the answer before we go that direction. Okay?
And there's some obvious positives, but there's some, there's some concerns, and there's some, these kind of questions, you know, and others, you know, how quickly you get it back, what if they don't have any technology at home, then you have to have packets? If you get into three days, they're not like they have three days worth of it, it's, you know, there's a lot of concerns. I have concerns about it, but it is something I think is worth us discussing.
How long does it take to check the packet? How long does it take?
See, to me, it all depends on the completion. If you have to, how much completion you have to have, and if it, because you're gonna have kids that come in and don't have it done, so what, you know, what are you gonna do with that? You know, and obviously, what you're gonna have to do is, you're gonna take some time to deal with the packet when they come back, which...
Then it takes off instruction time.
Right, exactly.
So, is the packet given like, at the beginning of the winter semester, or when it's...
And that's how we would, we'd have to come up with a plan on that. Obviously, with elementary, it would be a little bit easier, because they could always give some things that are reviewing as far as math, and that could be, but it's at the upper level that I think you'd, you know, have a, they'd have to sort of pick and choose what time period you get in, if they still have block classes. It becomes a little bit more of an issue, I think. You almost have to guess where you're gonna be.
If you give it out too early, some will lose it.
So, you almost have to be safe and more of a, a little bit of a review, and yet some of an inquiry as far as what's, where you're going down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Okay, we're down to considering the annual financial audit.
Thank you, Chairman Rager. What we'll do is, on Thursday, Lanny White will be here, the auditor, to discuss the 2017 fiscal year audit with you all. You should have his charts that he's going to be going over. I emailed out the, a copy of the audit. I did not have Sherry print that out, because he will be bringing copies on Thursday as well. So, if there are any questions that I can answer at this time, I'd be glad to, but he's gonna go in over it quite a bit.
The pre-laminaries did look good, right?
We had no findings this year, so, very glad for that. It's a definite reflection on the team that we have in our district. They're wonderful at the school level, the staff that I have working for me, I can't say enough good things about them, especially for how new they are, they learn very, very quickly. And we're trying to eliminate just things as we go along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, and the next is the approval of the design development documents for the Jane Gitch and Harry Gatton in your park.
How are you, Mr. Thomas?
I'm doing great. How are you doing this evening?
Hello.
Hello. There's actually three items that all sort of go hand-in-hand with one another. So, if you don't mind, I'm gonna sort of skip around a little bit in order of maybe giving you a better explanation of what they are. The first item that you have on there are the actual documents. We've all received the PDF. I'll print it up a half stack and instead of bringing the big set of drawings, I'll bring the smaller set of drawings. We're actually a little bit ahead of PDFs on our documents, but we didn't want to stop because it took some time to get some information we were trying to achieve. That's the reason why we weren't here last week. So, what we've got, at design development, we have documents that are about 65, 70% complete. Part of that documents, when you all approve those, you also need to approve a BG2 and a BG3. And you have both of those, all three of these items are in your package. We'll talk about the BG3 first, if we could. The BG3 talks about the budget. It's actual, an opinion of probable cost. And so, when you look at it, you're gonna see that it really goes hand-in-hand with the BG1 that you originally approved for the project. We had a total opinion of construction cost of $802,000, $802,000. And you look at the fees associated, the architecture fees, the topographical survey, special inspections, does everyone understand the special inspections? That's something that the state requires the district to hire out. Once we've actually bid the project, within about two or three days, we'll receive bids for special inspections. So, you'll sign a contract with a contractor, and a contractor, a contract with a special inspector. Special inspector will do things such as test the soils for compaction, concrete testing, and things of that nature, all required by housing, building, construction. Then you've got planned review fees, bring and disposition of documents, and then you've got the 5% contingency that's on the project. And when you add all that together, it brings the line item to $944,906. So, that's the construction side of it. So, when you come back to the BG2, BG2 talks about the project. And one thing we want to make sure that we do is, we finish these documents, that we set it up so that on bid day, we've got some options. Okay? So, if you go look at the BG2, you'll see that on the very front page, I listed some alternates. These are alternates that I identified, that I thought would be important for you all to be able to see the cost, and to make sure that we don't have to go back and redesign and rebid the project. Okay? So, the first one I want to talk about, when I was last here, we talked about LED field lighting. Okay, so, in your BG3, we have $140,000 in electrical number, the total electrical number was 270. That is for your standard field lighting that you've seen all your fields. And when we did the cost opinion, the LED lights were an additional $70,000. Okay? When they sent to me their payback report, it came back at 10 years, which was $7,000 a year. Of course, when you're looking at payback on electricity and lights, you have two factors. What is your utility rate, and what is your usage? And I personally didn't believe that usage and that utility rate. So, I asked them to go back and look at it again and make sure they're using the right utility rate, and to better explain to me what their usage was. I've ran a baseball park and our utility bills was not that high, so we couldn't save that type of money, if that makes sense. So, what I didn't want to do is come with you all with a cost opinion, telling you what your payback was on LED lights, without making sure it was correct. So, usage, we can't dictate usage, the end user dictates usage. And utility bills, they need, they know the rate, they can determine the rate. So, I just want to make sure it's more accurate, and if it comes back again at 10 years, then that is what it is. But I wanted to make sure. So, that's one reason I didn't bring that with me tonight, because I don't trust it. Number two, I've identified some other items as potential alternates. If you remember, we had a softball logo, we had a baseball, and a soccer ball. And when I sat down to do my cost opinion for that, they come out very inexpensive. But my experience tells me that contractors are gonna view it, and even when I put $400 cubic yard for concrete in there, I don't believe that my numbers are gonna be correct. So, what I want to do on bid day is really find out what those are, because if they're somewhere around $15,000 or $20,000 each, you may not want to do them at that piece. So, that's three alternates that I identified, that I felt like it'd be prudent to get them in alternate bids. Then, the final few was the T-ball outfield fence and the dugouts for T-ball. Now, obviously, we want to have the dugouts, we want the fence. If you're looking at the two fields, if you had to give up dugouts or fence on one of the two fields, you would do it on T-ball, because most kids will not want to hit it to the fence. And there's ways of setting up dugouts for those guys that would still be safe without spending a lot of money. Not saying we can't get all of this in the project, what we want to do is make sure that on bid day, we're able to move the project forward. And so, with that stated, we're doing an opinion of probable cost, the contractor's gonna tell you what they're willing to do the project for. And that, that's where their cost comes in. I view it one way, and if each one of you all look at the drawings, you're going to feel things different from one another. So, when they're setting out their cost and they're bidding it, each bid we're gonna get is gonna be a different number. So, we're not gonna get two bids with the same number. The closest we've ever had bids come in are within 10 cents. It's never happened since one time. Usually, you know, we're on a small project, 50, 60,000 dollar project, we may get bids within a thousand dollars or two. On a project such as this, we're gonna have a range, probably anywhere from 40 or 50,000 dollars up to maybe 100,000 dollars. So, the contractors are gonna view it differently. And we just want to ensure that when we have the bids in, that you all are able to make a decision if they're able to move the project forward. So, that's why we've listed some voluntary alternates. What you may not know, you may not understand, is every time we do an alternate, there's a fee associated with it. Okay? So, let's say we do an alternate, we've got a whole project, we've got the AD fee listed, and we do an alternate that you don't accept, you're not gonna pay the full fee. You will pay only the fee for the design and the bidding, you won't pay a fee for construction. Okay? But you get six months down the road and you say, hey, we want to put some additional money into it, you would still be able to get that product, that piece done. Does that make sense? So, you're not paying for something that, you could be paying for something you're not getting by doing the alternates, but you're not paying the full dollar. You're paying roughly 70 cents of a dollar for that item. Does that make sense? I want to make sure everyone understands what alternates mean to you and how they're to your advantage on small projects and large projects. Any questions about that? Outside of that, the BG2 is really just talking about energy, energy consumption. So, when you get down to the bottom of the front page, you're gonna see R value, R12 for walls, and R2 for windows and doors, and R42 for the roof. That's really just the insulation value that's being built for the building. You'll also see that we are not doing any of the leads and net zero, we're net zero ready. We're doing to meet energy star and to exceed the ashtray by 10%. Which, so, what I'm trying, that's on the very front of the BG2 I'm talking about. But you want to have a very energy efficient building, is what I'm trying to touch.
Craig, what's your thoughts on actually breaking ground, hopeful, and hopeful, when do you think kids will be able to use it? What do you think?
Well, let's look at the project in two pieces. I didn't really talk about the basketball piece. That'll be done very quickly, once the project starts. We're hoping to come back to you all the next month to ask for final approval to go out to bidding. So at your next work session, we should be done with our documents, go to bidding. We want to be on the street for about five weeks. So we're looking at receiving bids somewhere in early February, the mid-February, and then in March, breaking ground. And then being able to have, obviously, the basketball will go much quicker. But the park, you know, we're going to need to go into probably, you know, six months or so to complete the park, I would think. Some things we didn't talk about, we've got just under 700 linear foot of forced main sewer that we have to run, to get from the sewer from the concession building to where your manhole is, and a big gravity bed once we get there. So we also have about 4,000 cubic yards of earth to bring onto the site, and 1,000 cubic yards of earth to move on the site. So it's about 5,000 cubic yards total to get the fields draining right, graded right, so.
And then it has to be inspected? Is that when one of those inspectors comes and make sure that...
Well, the inspection's been building the building. So we've got non-structures being built, you can pack that soil at a different level. Whereas if you're building a building on it, we want 98% compaction on a building. If it's going to have vehicles on it, like buses and things, it's 95%. And then we're going to be out in the field, it's going to be about 93%. So we won't inspect the soil for compaction on the fields. But we will, we're putting the buildings, the four dugouts in the concession building, we'll have inspections for that. The concrete, all concrete that's placed, they'll do air testing onsite, and then they'll take cylinder samples. And then on the seven-day, 14, 21, and 28, they actually will break those samples offsite and send us a test report, to make sure the concrete reaches compaction. If it doesn't reach compaction, then the contractor has to tear it out and redo it, unless it's real close. Just keep in mind, concrete over about a 50-year period continues to get harder.
Yeah.
And then once you get about 50 years of age, then it reaches maximum strength. But within 28 days, you should be real close to your maximum strength. Does that make sense? So we'll know very quickly, that's, the seven-day break will give us the indication if we get good concrete or not. And then those numbers should rise at each one of those breaks, so.
But like plumbing underneath concrete, that's to be inspected?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, as they go along.
But that's not special inspection.
That's not special.
That's housing, building, construction, that's what the building permit goes for. Electrical, HVAC, and plumbing. You actually have an inspector will come out, that will inspect those under the contractor's contract. Special inspections can't be put under the contractor's contract. They have to be procured by the owner.
Okay.
So that's why we have a line item for special inspections, because I, a firm will go out and procure those for you. Seven years ago, we didn't have to do that. It used to be all under the contractor. So we would list what the special inspections were, and all the testing, they put it in their bid. Now, it's just the opposite. So the engineers have done a good job going out and parking themselves or building officials.
I hope so.
So Craig, is understanding then, because the folks at Bremen, their big question would be, when can they get a parking? So the very best case scenario would be soccer next fall, and in all likelihood, it could very well be baseball, the fall and spring.
It will be maybe fall baseball in the fall, but it will be spring baseball most likely. But you shouldn't be able to do soccer. Basketball will be ready towards the summer. And keep in mind, the basketball's out of the way, it's behind the school, so that can be done and be in use long before the rest of it.
Yeah, that's a recess thing for the kids.
Yes.
So how's it? What's going to have sprinkler system, where the sprinkler system being used?
Excuse me?
The sprinkler system. Plumbing include sprinkler system of $36,000.
Well, that's a, that's a mis, misnomer. This is a general form. The sprinkler system would be a sprinkler system for a building. It's not, it's not, it's just...
They won't need for concessions then?
No, no, no.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, okay.
No. It's just on the form, it's like the gentleman before, you got a form, you fill it out, they can't change what their part is. But the building's not sprinkled, there'll be, there's no firewalls in it, there's none of that type of stuff, so.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you all. Would you like for me to leave these with you?
Yes.
And they're marked on their form.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You too. Okay, the textbook plan, Greenville Elementary.
Yes, Greenville Elementary has had a pro house. They trained literacy collaborative coach for six years for their K-2, but they have not had a coach for their 305. But the 305s tried to model and do things according to literacy collaborative strategies without a coach. Well, over time, they decided they needed more resources. So this is why this particular textbook plan has come about. It is a plan that Stacy's investigating along with her team, that will align pretty closely with what they already do with literacy collaborative. It doesn't have textbooks per se, it comes with 10 separate unit books per grade level per child, and so that serves as their textbook. So I had never encountered that before, but Stacy says this is the new and upcoming age of textbooks. So I had to contact the State Department to get approval for that. And they said, since it is part of a textbook package, that that would be fine for them to actually order with textbook monies. So that's all been taken care of. This particular textbook company will supply them with free consumables, which can include those little unit readers for six years, so that's part of the package. So anyway, the proposal is that they want to take their 2016, 17 textbook money, combined with their 17, 18 textbook money, for a total that is within your decision paper. So the total purchase will be $26,290. And this will leave them, they won't have any textbook money left after they make this purchase. As a matter of fact, they're going to have to kick in an additional $1,103 and 20 cents from their ABA funds in order to make this purchase. They wouldn't have had to, had the state not reduced their textbook money this year, but as you know, they were cut 50%, just like most of the schools. So this has caused them to have to pick up part of the balance. Do you have any questions about the textbook plan?
No. Thank you. Okay, and next is to consider the amended 17, 18 salary schedule, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, yeah. Anytime you change the salary schedule, the salary schedule in its entirety must be reviewed. What this is, is I've added a monthly pay scale on the classified monthly page, and it's to pay the executive director for Martin Hall. This is 100% funded by the Martin Foundation, as well as taxes and benefits as well. So they're covering that portion as well.
Is there any questions in this position, our schedule posting? If not, we'll move on to declaring the outdated technology surplus. Any questions on this? Attached is the, I guess this is just like a rundown of what we have for some...
Nice list.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, appreciate it. And then down to the, we're down to reviewing the superintendent's annual evaluation. I guess we need to get our consent agenda items, and then do that. Any questions on the consent agenda items that we have on labor access, facilities, fundraising, vouchers, and the approval for the attendance for us at the KSCA one, or some how doing for continued education? If there's no questions, we are going to go into closed session at this time to review the superintendent's annual evaluation, when he was hired. And we go into closed session to do that, and we're going to do it in December and June, instead of just in June, so. I need a motion to, and we can't, we're not going to come out and present that, it'll be, the vote will be presented at the board meeting on Thursday. So you can go if you want, we're going to be in our little... I need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johansson, second as well. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?